Good evening, everybody. I think we're gonna get going here. Let Kimberly be the leader and let us know when we're ready to go. Thank you, Kimberly. All right, welcome, everybody, to the Durham Select Board meeting on 12/12/2023. We are in our new residence over here at the fire station this evening. We have a full forum tonight while we all rise. Okay, then welcome, everybody. Do we have any amendments? Okay, done, Steve, and Paul. Everybody feel good?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Public comment, do we have anybody with a public comment? The way we're gonna do this tonight is you can all just stay where you are, state your name. Kimberly's gonna be able to hear you right out back, no problem. If you like the camera towards you, feel free to turn towards it. But otherwise, that will keep everybody from having to come up this evening. Public comment, anybody? Okay.
Uh, no. I haven't done this before.
Nope.
Jean Sanders, I live on Suntill Drive. So, I'm not sure if it's a comment or if I'm able to ask questions, but I did see the audit report. Is that, that's on the agenda tonight, I think?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and will we have a chance to ask questions at that time?
Jerry, what was your format of the audit report?
So, there's no real audit report. We just have Mark here to answer questions. We had a couple of folks from the Budget Committee that had questions about the audit report and they wanted clarification on it. So, we brought Mark in to clarify some of those questions. And you can open it up to Q and A about the whole budget process.
Yeah, we could open it up to a few questions. We know what the Budget Committee, you know, a lot of this is for education for everybody, including the town, so, who are you gonna say, Rich?
I would say if she's part of the Budget Committee, she'll, if you're gonna open it up to them.
I'm not.
The appropriate thing would be to ask the questions now and then.
Okay. You can do it that way, too.
All right.
Go ahead, Jean.
I'll just say that I found the PowerPoint on the town's website that summarizes the summary of audit results, and I'm concerned. I've been a CPA for nearly thirty years. I've never seen such a bad audit report. So, I'd like to hear from the town what it's doing to address it. I mean, this was issued four months ago, so hopefully there have been some controls put in place and some things done. But that's what I'd like to hear.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think we'll definitely address that. That'll be on the end of the presentation.
Okay, great.
Anything else, Jean?
Nope.
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with a public comment? All right, we'll go to old business. We have the Union Church Committee report, Bill?
Terrific. I hope you each have a copy of the main part of the report. I think Jerry has a copy with all of the appendices. The report is pretty self-explanatory. I had a, just a spectacular committee to work with. We had Paula Erdman Purdy, Lois Kilby Chesley, Emily Alexander, Tyler Hutchinson, Neil Berry, and John Talbot on the committee, and Tia Wilson and Candace Despikes were alternates. We took our charge from the Select Board very seriously. We had a number of meetings. They included actually going to visit the church as a group. They included calling in several experts to help us with questions and going out and getting people to help us estimate how much repairs would cost. And we applied, I think, a very thoughtful process. Everybody contributed, and our eventual conclusion was that the best course of action for the town with respect to the church would be to transfer it for no cost to the Historical Society, to the Durham Historical Society, along with the about $30,000 that's been set aside at previous town meetings for maintenance and repair of the church. And that way, the Historical Society could take it over, could run it as a museum for the benefit of the townspeople and the kids in town, and the town would be relieved of the responsibility, which it has kind of not done a great job at, of keeping it in great shape. And the Historical Society would then have the responsibility to keep it in good repair and open it to the public. There's a fair amount of detail in the report. There's even more detail in the report with the appendices, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you. Questions from the board?
I know your opinion, you know I always have questions.
No.
First, one is a process question. Is this something that we're going to discuss and decide this evening?
We, I think we're gonna discuss it a little bit to decide what the way forward is here. I think there's two major things that we have to discuss is the recommendation in general to transfer this property to the Historical Society. The second will be is about the money that actually the Historical Society has raised at the various town meetings and has been allocated by the town. What gets, excuse me, what gets done with that money? I think those are the two probably major issues that we have to discuss, so we can have that discussion.
Okay. I should have written down one. My other one wants to get found if we're not recording. See if someone else has one while I think for a second.
Josh?
Sure. Well, I just, first, thank you, Bill, and the committee. I know you put in a lot of work, and the report was very thorough. And so, my, I think the recommendation is something that is best for the building and best for the town and the townsfolk and sort of what we've been asked to do by townsfolk regarding the raising and allocating of money. And my only concern with the recommendation, and I don't know if you have any thought about it, is with our responsibility, the fiscal responsibility that we have is, and this is sort of a discussion point, I guess, for the board as well, is, is, is it appropriate for us to give the money to the Historical Society, or should we sort of earmark it for the repairs? And does that change, earmark it for the repairs and just say, hey, when you have the proposal and you need the funds, we approve it then? Does that, in your opinion, change the recommend? To me, it's an extra step, but I think it protects the townsfolk, and I don't want to imply that I don't, you know, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, sure, sure. I think, and this is my opinion only, we haven't floated this around the committee or anything, but I think as long as that money gets applied to the repairs and maintenance of the church in kind of a timely way, about the same time as it gets transferred to the Historical Society, I think that would work fine. Any mechanism that has the money that's already been allocated by town meeting for the maintenance and repair of the church, any mechanism that has that go towards the maintenance and repair of the church at about the same time as it gets transferred, I think, does the job.
I think you and I sort of have a unique perspective on that inherent distrust, justified in ninety-nine percent. Sorry, but that's just, I mean, that was the only thing I was thinking about when I started your report, but otherwise, I thought it was fantastic, and I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And one of the things I had been thinking about since I wrote the report is a mechanism to do that, and I think, you know, if the Historical Society got the building and then they found a contractor to do the work, maybe prepaying the contractor that money, I think, would make everybody happy.
Thank you.
I'm trying to frantically rehear this. Did I read that this would go to town vote? Or is, I know that we have the authority as a Select Board to dispose of, but did I read that correctly, that you think that this should go before the voters?
You have the authority to do it either way.
Right.
But, you know, the committee's opinion was that it probably ought to go to the town meeting.
We could disposition the property right now, today, if we really wanted to. If the board decided to do that, we can dispose of any piece of town property. What we can't do is we can't just up and transfer $30,000 or thereabouts over two members who are not authorized to do that. That would have to go to a town vote. So, the idea that both of them needs to go together, I get it, that that would be appropriate and the right thing to do, but you'd then be holding the property more than likely till the April meeting and then, you know, putting it before the voters and saying, do you want to transfer the money over? And also, at the same time, ask them about the property.
And that's exactly, that was the context in which we made that recommendation.
And you're comfortable and that is correct in stating that the committee or Commission Committee is comfortable, yes, is comfortable waiting until April for a property transfer and potential budgetary funds?
I think the committee would be happy however it happens.
Okay.
We still have to ask the Historical Society, right?
The Historical Society, actually, they had a meeting, and they voted to accept it if it's offered by the town, and the last appendix in the report is a letter from them stating that.
Sean, do you have a question?
No, I was like, Jerry, I was just gonna say probably $10,000 goes away ahead of December, so.
Yeah, we do realize that. Yeah, that would have to be reallocated at town meeting at that point if we passed that law. Thank you, though.
Do we know if there are any contractors lined up that we would be in a situation where we could potentially get a deposit of that $10,000 ahead of time to be, is that?
You certainly could do that. I mean, if, at the moment, it's the town's building, and if you wanted to find a contractor and put the money up front with the contractor to do the repairs.
Is that $10,000 that is?
It's more like $30,000.
Well, the $10,000 is the money that was part of last year's budget that will expire. Is that $10,000 included in this thirty?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Questions?
Neil was on the committee, and I think he made.
Just a point, I think the Historical Society has a different perspective maybe on who they'd like to do the work, and the town might pick, so leaning into them might be a good thing.
Yeah, I don't think that we could allocate the money until the Historical Society has sort of figured out how they're gonna pay, you know, how it's gonna be paid for and, you know, over above whatever that money would be. So, I agree that that's sort of, but.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? The report's awesome. Really lays everything out clearly.
Well, the committee did a great job.
They did a great job, absolutely.
I think this is a perfect example of how volunteers can support the work that this board and town staff needs to do, and I'm very personally very appreciative of this because I know that, you know, this is really important and that town staff and this board don't have the capacity to be able to do this type of thorough investigation of these issues, and so I hope that the Solid Lease Committee comes back with something as thorough and wonderful, because I think you guys have done a really great job, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
So, next steps is, what are we, what are we gonna do? Is the Historical Society, you should get a call to us? Are we taking care of it? Are we gonna discuss that at a later date? Where are we going with this?
Well, I mean, based on the, I mean, the board can jump in here, but based on my assessment, you're talking about estimated cost here of $56,000 for the repairs in this report, if I read it correctly, and we have essentially $30,000 in the bank. So, at the very least, you'd be looking at an additional thirty, say, $30,000 that you'd need added to this in order for even the town to go off and do this at this point in time. So, that wouldn't happen until town meeting anyways. You've got a capital request in for, the Historical Society has a capital request in for, I believe it was around $50,000. I don't remember the number up and off my head. So, that's already gonna be a warrant article. Should it fail, if the building does not get transferred over to the Historical District Commission, then they would take the building at that point. You'd put both on the ballot, basically, both on the warrant. You would leave the money allocated for the capital account in the event that the building did not transfer to them, would be currently allocated $30,000. You'd have to raise the other ten again.
And it's twenty-one in restoration.
No, right, right, twenty-one in restoration. The ten that was allocated, that will go back into the coffers of the town. You take that at town meeting and say, we're gonna reallocate that ten, make it at the $31,000, right, transfer that over with the building. That's one, I'll say, one warrant question, might be two. And then you have a second question, which is the capital account. If we decide to keep the building, then we need to raise another $50,000 for doing the work that's listed here, the fifty-six, plus having extra money in the kitty to deal with continuing repairs of the building. So, it's an either or scenario. It's kind of what I'm, what I'm kind of looking at, but Joe?
Yeah, I think we should just put it on a warrant article that we give the building to them with $30,000. And so, even though $10,000 of that comes back to us at the end of this year, we'll just earmark that to go back with it, with the $21,000 in their current account. So, I think we should just put that on the warrant article. I don't know what the process is, if we vote tonight that we want to put that on there, or just state that we want to put that on there and move along with it, or what that process looks like.
Do you foresee the question of the building ownership transferring as one question and the money as one question? Because where my brain is going is if the town votes to transfer ownership but doesn't vote to transfer the money, is the Historical Society then still going to want to assume ownership of the building if they don't have the money to do the repairs?
That's a good question, which is kind of why I'm thinking of making a contingent. Building and money together, and then a separate pool of money that the town could, they could vote to give it to them on top of that if they wanted to, but it would be a separate contingent line.
Can the money in the building be in the same question legally? Is that allowed?
I don't know. I don't know that, but I have somebody in the audience shaking their head yes.
As far as I know, I think it would. Are you fine?
So, can I just interject for one second? My only caveat to all of this is I would want to know from the Historical Society if there's any benefit for them getting the building sooner. I don't know if there are grant funds that are available sooner, if there's any, anything they could take advantage of sooner.
Lois tells me there is grant money available before then, so there would be some benefit to getting it before then. They could apply for it sooner.
And so, I guess, I don't want to put Lois on the spot, but I mean, would it be advantageous for us to transfer the property sooner?
There are roving deadlines on some grants, so, for instance, it could be due on January 31st. I don't know, or 30th. I don't know what the deadlines are without looking them up, but it would be advantageous for the building to be owned by a nonprofit if you're applying for grants that are only available to nonprofits.
So, that would be something I would very support to think about, because I think maybe tonight's not the appropriate night, and that question of whether they would still accept the property without the $30,000, which I think, you know, I think at least the $21,000, I think we could do, is something for them to consider. But I think if it's advantageous for them in fundraising, I think we should do it sooner than April. And that's not to discount the other $10,000 or more that the town would allocate at town meeting, but I think any support and help we could give, that would be helpful.
That's actually, no, I think you were saying.
He just asked me if I was all set.
Oh, yeah.
How about?
I think if we were going as a board and entertaining doing a transfer of ownership before town meeting, I don't know how it would be, but I would feel more comfortable where, first right of refusal isn't the right word, but that if they were to sell the buildings or something like that, that the town would have the opportunity. I'm a little bit, I completely understand that it could be more advantageous to be able to make the transfer sooner. It does make me a little bit uncomfortable to not go before the voters with the question, and so if there were some sort of part of the agreement where, doesn't that exist for the Methodist Church? That there's birds back to the town?
I think there's some kind of, no, that was transferred by the Select Board.
It was, okay, thank you. That's good to know. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, does that make sense to people?
Yeah, Lois tells me that it goes if they can't raise money to repair it or something, it goes to the Historical Society, but that's the West Methodist.
I see. This is where I'm getting confused about the different organizations. Thank you for clarifying.
I think if the organization was willing to accept it without funding for right now, holding over, expecting funding once we get to the town meeting, or is it contingent upon them getting the funding, they don't want to transfer the property unless the funding is absolutely guaranteed to be there?
I think I would, I would want to ask somebody who speaks for the Historical Society.
So, that's where I'd want to run with it. I'd want to, I'd want to ask that question. So, if that's a contingency, let's find out. Secondly, I suspect if they, you know, if it were to be transferred and then there was a good faith effort to also transfer the money at a later time, I think that would probably work fine. I think the town would do it. It's just, my only sticking point is on this. I know we have the authority to transfer the building. It gets a little gray for me when it comes to transferring funds to a private entity. So, but with that said, if the particular entity wants to come back, we could put this on a, maybe our next meeting, and in the meantime, we could do a little due diligence with the town attorney and ask them how this could all shake out, if in fact what we're talking about could even be achieved by just the board, or how we should approach it from the town's perspective.
That's great, that's great.
Lois?
The other option would be for the town to make the repairs that are necessary before the transfer and use the $30,000 up to the point that it's been allocated. The renovator that Jerry and I talked to said that he could obviously take some things off. There are some things that are not as, that don't need to be expedited as much as others. So, if the town wanted to keep the building and put the $30,000 or some portion thereof onto the repairs prior to the transfer, that's a contingency that lots of real estate deals have. You make the, you put a new roof on, you put a whatever, new furnace in, whatever, that's a contingency before a deal goes through. So, you have the money, that's your option.
So, I mean, my recommend, I support doing this. My recommendation would be that we, we have somebody from the Historical Society at our next meeting, and I know it's on December 26th, but I think this is important, and I know we're trying to keep that meeting relatively short, but I think this is important enough for us to have this conversation, and I don't know if they have a meeting between now and then, but if there could be some discussion of what we've talked about. Because, I mean, what Lois said is a good idea, but would they rather be the ones making the decisions, or would they rather the town do it? I mean, that's, I don't, I don't want Lois to make that decision, unless she's able to, which I can't, I don't think she is. I think that's something that there needs to be further discussion on. So, that would be my suggestion, is we table this for the next meeting.
Joe?
Yeah, I agree with Josh's point. I think it's important that we give clarity whether the organization wants it upfront, even if the vote for the money has to come later, because if they're not comfortable with that, then we go back to the table of should we do repairs before transferring or stuff like that. So, I think just getting that clarity from involved parties is important.
Do we, do we want to come, or are we all in a consensus on the board? I think it's important to say, or vote if we are, perhaps, that are we all in agreement that transferring the property and just the logistics are, that we're all in agreement that we want to transfer the property and the logistics around it are what need to be ironed out? Should we take a vote on that? Is that something that we're just?
I wasn't thinking a vote was necessary for that. I think we need some legal input to see, like, after, I think, something that Rich mentioned earlier about transferring the property with the money, are we able to do that with money that's allocated? I'd like clarification on that, on whether, you know, allocated money to transfer to the private entity, which would help the idea of actually, you know, the town not doing the work would probably be better for everybody, but transferring with the money, and having the Historical Society take over.
So, is the town going to write an agreement and offer that to the Historical Society, or is the Historical Society coming to the town with an offer?
I think it's six and a half, doesn't mean the other. I think right now, it's really, it's their offer, that's what's presented to us, but I mean, it could go either way. I mean, the last one, we consulted the attorney and have, and we follow his direction. I think that's the most prudent thing to do in this situation.
I agree.
Whenever you're dealing with real estate, so, you know, I think, I think everybody wants this to happen, both sides want it to happen, so we just need to find the right mechanisms to put it in place and let it happen, and do it the right way, so that there's no recourse back on either party in the future.
Jerry, is there anything that you need from us in terms of next steps for you to know?
Just direction.
That's what I was getting at by asking for, are we all in consensus? Is this, are we seeking the legal opinion? Is he writing an agreement? I feel like coming out of this, Jerry needs direction on what he needs to do when our meetings come.
So, what I will do is I will contact the attorney when he knows, between that, get information from him that I can bring to the next meeting, and we're, it is our, more of all, probably, to do this.
So, there's nothing else that you need from us at this time? You know that we're in a consensus about whether or not we want to transfer, and you're gonna seek out the information from the attorney?
Right, right. And I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss further, what information I found out from the attorney on the legalities of transferring it over with money or no money, or taxpayer money, or however that works. I'll have information for you for the next meeting.
Any further discussion? Okay, thank you very much to the committee, appreciate it.
Thank you for the talk and discussion.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. We're gonna move on to new business. Q and A with Mark Roy, the power associates.
We started off with.
Hey, Jerry, I'll just.
Okay, so, when the audit report came out, there was some questions from a few members on the Budget Committee that in regard to unversed hedge fund balance and that sort of thing. The result of that was, I was asked if I could bring Mark in to talk about that, to clarify some questions, and that's, that's why he's here today. So, if you still have those questions, we can just open it up. I don't know. If you still have those questions, we can just, just open it up, I don't know where you wanna start. I, I can't even remember what the questions were when they were coming across the email, so. Leaving it up to you folks to get clarification, that union, and that's why Mark's here. So I know Milton Neal was leading those questions, I don't know where he, why.
I got, I got an answer before you have. Oh, I'm just kidding. I thought it was something else. So I still have some of the same questions.
Right.
The, the biggest one was, the unassigned fund, we, we have called undesigned funds wherever it was incorrect. Is what we've used to consider what we could transfer to reduce the tax levy. So in my discussions, email discussions with Mark, he has said, and he's letting me clarify this. It's both the unassigned and the assigned funds that should be considered for those services. And in that process of asking those questions, I learned how those balances get sort of tallied at the end of the year and reallocated. And I think he has some suggestions, he may have already talked to you about how to change that process. Like we use this year's revenue for next year's budget, right?
Next year's revenue for next year's budget.
Well, currently we do this year's revenue for next year's.
Yeah, that, right, currently that's, so, so, right, I mean, part of what I see is, is creating a lot of confusion. At least based off of the questions I got from the budget committee members is, it's. Two different ways of looking at the same problem, but you're trying to talk about the same thing. So there's a perspective from the town of, okay, well, this is how the resources flow in and out of the town from a budget perspective. But then there's the, the GASB standards on how you actually record and recognize resource inflows and outflows. And also how you present them in financial statements, like the, the, the annual financial statements at the end of the year. And so there's this disconnect between, okay, well, yeah, you budgeted to use last year's revenues. But you're not gonna see last year's revenues on the financial segments, that doesn't make any sense. Because under GASB standards, you recognize revenues in the year that, that you earned them, right? That they, that you, that they're measurable and, and earned. So my recommendation, and what I've been working with Jerry, is to. First, as, as we've been starting to record the transactions and take over the accounting function for the town. There's been a couple changes that I've just done within the accounting system to make it as clear as possible. And also to align how, how the budget committee, the select board, and the townspeople think about the budget. And how it's presented on a GASB basis, right, on a GASB formatted basis. So in, in, you know, FY24's budget, my recommendation is that you actually budget for estimated revenues, estimated non-tax revenues. To help determine how much you're going to reduce your tax levy by to arrive at whatever, you know, appropriations that, that, you know, you've appropriated for. Because you're budgeting for appropriations in FY24, you should be estimating non-tax revenues in FY24, that you're going to get in in FY24. So that you can determine what your tax levy is. By doing it the way that the town has been doing it, you're estimating based off, you're using revenues that you've received in the prior year. And then using that to try to figure out how much you're lending in taxes and the, and the. End result has been that you taxed too much. I mean, every year you just tax more than you really need to. So you end up with this, with what you have, which is, I think, an overlarge fund balance for the general fund. The other, the other, a couple of the problems are that you just had everything in the general fund. When you really, for, as far as I'm concerned, it's much clearer and much more transparent to people. Anything that is restricted for specific expenditure, you might as well report that in a separate fund, right? A special revenue fund, a capital projects fund, something like that, GASB allows for that. And by doing that, that clears out anything that is already, it's, you're not, it's, it doesn't lapse at the end of the year. You're not spending it in any one particular year. It allows for the general fund to really just show you what your activities are for this current fiscal year. And what the results of those activities are for the current fiscal year, and then you can step from one year to the next. Here's where our fund balance was at the beginning of the year, total fund balance, which, you know, may have some different classifications. But primarily it's gonna be unassigned fund balance. Here's our fund balance at the beginning of the year, here's all the resource inflows and outflows that happened during the year. So that we can arrive at, well, this is what our fund balance is at the end of this year. And then we step from one year to the next, it makes it so much easier than the way the town has been doing it in the past. So I, I am gonna be recommending to the select board and to the budget committee this year, when, when we're going through the budgets. To kind of shift the focus of how they've been thinking about. Resources that are available and how they're used. Because, to give you an example, the way, the way it seems like you've been doing it. And it's not uncommon among calendar year towns. Every time I see budgeting happen in the manner that the town, this town has been using it, has been for towns that have calendar years. I really haven't ever seen it with towns that have like a June fiscal year. But the way it is, is it's, oh, well, the revenues that we just generated last year, it's like it's filling up a pot. And then that's available at the end of the year to use for next year, right? But that really doesn't, I mean, nobody ever, nobody, nobody budgets, businesses don't budget for that, budget that way. They budget, you know, well, what revenues am I gonna get in this month compared to what expenses am I gonna have this month? I mean, house, households don't budget that way, you don't, oh, well, I made $30,000 last year, so now let me. That's the $30,000 I have to spend this coming year, nobody does that, right? So it doesn't, it, I get, I get the idea behind it. And like I said, it's not uncommon, it's just a very odd way to think about it. Particularly when the end result, the financial reporting that you see after the fact is misaligned with that, right? That's what I think really causes the confusion.
So how do you estimate for the income for 2024?
By taking a look, by doing any other estimates that you would do normally, you take a look at what you've had in prior years. And then you also say, okay, well, what do we really expect to, to have in significant or material changes from one year to the next? So excise tax, for example, is your primary, your primary revenue source, right? You go, okay, well, in general, do we, are we gonna have less excise taxes? Well, it's not likely, you know, in any particular year that you're gonna have less excise taxes. Unless you all of a sudden have residents that leave or, or maybe there's a significant, you know, depression, right? Where, okay, well, I'm not gonna, you know, renew my car or whatever, right? But in most years, because your excise taxes are based off of the value of cars anyway, and. Buying new cars on a general basis, most years your excise taxes are gonna generally go up, right? So you can, and what I did with Jerry on this first draft of the budget that he's been working on, I said, well, what you can do is just take a look at. What you budgeted for last year and just flat budget it as a starting point. So if you budgeted a million dollars last year for excise taxes, just start with a million dollars for your first kind of go around with the budget. And then you use that, that, those estimations, you, you modify those estimations as you're going through to say. All right, well, is it reasonable that we're only gonna get, you know, the exact same amount that we, that we budgeted? Or compared to actual, actual amounts, right? Did we overbudget last year compared to what we actually received? We budgeted a million and only got 900,000, then we should modify our budget. Did we budget a million dollars but actually got 1.2 million, well, now we should really adjust our estimate for revenues. Or if you're, if you're, you know, expecting to get, you know, most of the other, most of the other revenues apart from state revenue sharing are, are. Not a significant portion of your non-tax revenues. And so most times people, you know, most times towns will simply go, okay, well, what did we budget last year? What did we actually receive? And let's just kind of play with that. The only reason why you're estimating those non-tax revenues is to arrive at how much you're gonna be raising in taxes. So if you're using last year's revenues, which have not, last year's actual revenues. As your amount that you're going to factor in on reducing your taxes, tax levy this year. It has no correla, there's no correlation between the two.
But isn't that an estimate? You gotta estimate somehow.
What I'm saying is it's a low estimate.
Well, I mean, if you know the excise tax were not 1%, you could take that number and times it by 1.2.
Well, yes, that's what I'm saying, you could, you could use last year's actuals, like I said, right? You could take a look at last year's actuals and go, okay, well, what's reasonable of, of an increase or maybe a decrease? But it's not likely in normal economies that you're gonna decrease the amount of revenues that you're taking in. Just like in normal economies, you're not gonna decrease the amount of expenses you're gonna have, right? So, but just to use the actual amounts that you had in prior year doesn't, ends up meaning that you estimate low for your revenues. And that necessarily results in taxing more than you would necess, than you would really actually have to have. And so when you do that year over year over year, or you end up building up a fund balance unnecessarily or unintentionally, yeah.
So if, what I'm hearing and understanding correctly is that what we have been doing in terms of expenditures. I'm saying we, talking to the budget committee and the select board members. And how we look at the utility costs and then what we spend as an actual. And then estimating what we think we're going to spend. Mark is suggesting that we do that same thing for revenues.
Correct.
And we haven't done that in the past, is that okay?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, so what ends up happening, like, when I first did the budget, like, when I first trained, you know, pulled the information from your accounting software into mine. And was, and just trying to pull everything together, then there was nothing budgeted for revenues, right? And the reason why is because when I looked through the Warren articles, well, yeah, you didn't really actually budget anything for revenues. You were just using last year's actual amounts, right? So it makes it look really weird, and as I said, it makes it a low estimate usually. Unless something unusual happens within the year.
What happens when you, if you're using, going with that philosophy that you're talking about, with estimating the revenues for this in 2024? What happens if your estimate is too high and you're basically under?
Right, so what, and.
Right, so what happens? You're gonna come up with a shortcut at the end of the year, how do you adjust for that?
How do you adjust for that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's what you have, that's what your unassigned fund balance is for. So what happens is, when you have a, again, thinking of it in terms of, you know, stepping from one year to the next. This is our starting point, this is the activity that we're having, that we're doing during the year, and this is where we end up. But at your starting point, think of your bucket of, of total, you know, fund balance, right? Which is just whatever we have, the net between our assets and our liabilities, right? Well, right now the town has 3.4, starting this, this FY22, right? When I take out, when I train, when I move all of the committed fund balances and all those restricted fund balances to just separate funds. Capital projects funds, special revenue funds, you have 3.4 million, right? So if you end up overestimating in any particular year.
I'm sorry, 3.4 million in the general?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the general fund, yeah.
Yep.
So 3.4 million in the general fund. Your Warren articles to appropriate funds, those are your, those are your appropriation authorization. Where the townspeople are saying, yes, you can take our money and go ahead and spend it on these things, right? So your appropriations don't change regardless of whatever your, your estimated revenues are in actuality. Which is why I, I intentionally avoid saying budgeted revenues. I always say estimated revenues even though that's just my personal thing, right? Because estimated revenues, you can be over or under your estimate, it doesn't really matter, right? They're not, it's not anything that has any impact in terms of budget to actual, right? There's nothing that stops you, even though you may have estimated a million dollars in excise taxes. And a million dollars in appropriations of whatever. All of a sudden you have 800, you only have $800,000 in revenues, it doesn't change your appropriation. You still are authorized as a town to appropriate a million dollars. The question is, well, where does that extra money come from? Well, that's what your, that your existing resources are for, right? So it, it's much better to have, to know what your starting point is as an unassigned fund balance and say, okay. We have 3.4 million dollars, we're estimating we're gonna have in non-tax revenues. Well, let's say our total appropriations are 10 million dollars, right? All the Warren articles to appropriate to, to provide the, you know, goods and services to the town, 10 million dollars. Our non-tax revenues we're estimating to be 2 million dollars, right? Well, the difference between your, your appropriations and your estimated non-tax revenues is the amount that you're expecting to tax, right? Because you're just gonna, well, we're gonna have 10 million dollars in appropriations. And we're only gonna have 2 million dollars in non-tax revenue. Well, if we're having a balanced budget, then we're gonna, going to raise 8 million dollars in taxes. But that's where you say, okay, well, what do we have for starting resources? Well, we have 3.4 million dollars, do we really need to raise 8 million dollars in taxes? Or is this a little too high, is this surplus excess, right? Excess surplus, meaning too much. If that's the case, then we don't need to raise 8 million dollars, we can actually budget a deficit. We can say, well, we're gonna have 10 million dollars in, in estimate, in appropriations. We're gonna have 2 million dollars in estimated revenues, which normally would result in 8 million. But we actually wanna kind of draw it down, we want this, redo this fund balance to actually be at the end of the year, a little bit less. Because it's just too much, right? So we're gonna budget 6.6 million dollars or whatever, 7.6 million dollars and budget to use 400,000 dollars of fund balance. So all of that is budget, right? All of that is saying, that's what we plan on doing. Then at the end of the year, you go, well, what did we actually do? So it may be that you appropriate, you appropriated 10 million, but you only spent 9.5. And it may be that you estimated 2 million, but you got 2.5 million. Well, now that's a, a million dollar swing, right? I mean, between what you wanted to happen with regard to your fund balance. We wanted our fund balance to go from, you know, 3.4 down to 3. But the actual results are that we had no deficit, we actually had a surplus and that built it up. By doing that year over year, which obviously this will be the first year where we're doing it. By doing that year over year, you can actually start to really control how your fund balance is going. When you, when you're not doing, meaning what level is that? When you're not doing that consistently or when, when the, when the townspeople are not understanding that process very well. Or even the budget committee or the select board, what ends up happening is you end up getting where you're at. Where you're raising more in taxes every year and you end up having. An unnecessarily large fund balance, or at least what, from my viewpoint, and unnecessarily large, it may not be from your viewpoint, yes?
We've had some discussions in the past about moving to a June fiscal year.
Yeah.
And how we would accomplish that, especially for our fixed income residents.
Yeah.
And this may be a discussion for another day, but I'm curious at. How you're saying that our fund balance is, in your opinion, too large.
Yeah.
On what type of percentage do you think it's too large? And could that potentially be a way for us to help?
To bridge.
To bridge that gap, to be able to change our, our fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, a general rule of thumb is your unassigned fund balance, meaning. Whatever you have left over after you take out all of your reserves. Your unassigned fund balance should be about two months' worth of expenditures, right? And the only reason for that is because it gives you financial flexibility. It allows for variable fluctuations in month-to-month cash flows. Or, you know, emergencies like, oh, well, we've got a pandemic and so we need to have this huge cash flow out of the door. Which I experienced with schools particularly. They, if you had a small fund balance at the beginning of 2020. And then all of a sudden COVID hit and you had promises from the federal government, hey, we'll give you 200,000 dollars worth of grants or 500,000. But you have to spend the money for us. Well, if you don't have that, 500,000 dollars, well, you've now missed out on the grants. Or you're, or you're really, you know, you're drawing down on your cash reserves. So that you're becoming very thin. Yes, if you start with 3.4 million and you say, okay, well, really, we only need about, you know, 16 to 20% of our, of our expenditures. Which is about two to three months almost. That would only come up to about 1.8 million, 2 million at the most, and that's a healthy fund balance, right? That, because, it's a healthy fund balance because in addition to that, you already have all of these reserves. That are set aside for, well, you know, capital expenditures for fire department equipment and capital expenditures for public works equipment. So you, I think you have a, a significant amount that you could use if you said, well. We, we're gonna need to do an 18-month budget in order to get us from a January, a December year end to a June year end thing. And we want to, we, we wanna kind of make sure that when we're raising our taxes, we're not, you know, killing. Everybody for that kind of stretch. Yeah, I mean, you could definitely use that and say, well, all right, we're gonna budget how we would normally for 18 months. Plus an estimating for 18 months' worth of revenues, but that'll result. Uh, but that'll result in a, an X amount of dollars being raised. We don't necessarily think we wanna raise all of that amount, so let's use fund balance and budget the deficit for that, for that 18-month period. And then drawing down from that. The other use of, obviously, unassigned fund balances, when you have very large ones, there's two, two primary ones, right? You either start giving it back to the taxpayers through budgeting deficits. If you do that in a reasonable manner, that can be done, you know, safely. If you do it unreasonably where you're like, oh, well, we have a million dollars, you know, more than we should, let's cut taxes by a million dollars, well, that doesn't, that's bad, that's a bad idea, you wouldn't wanna do that. The other thing is you just say, well, look, it's unassigned, well, let's assign, let's, let's commit for something. Let's ask the townspeople, what do you wanna do? We have this million dollars that we already raised in taxes. Yes, we're gonna try to lower taxes or the amount that we would normally raise otherwise, but we have roads that we gotta take care of, we have buildings that we have to take care of, we have, you know, projects that we want to do. We have a, you know, a pumper truck that we need to buy. What do you wanna do with this month, right?
So I'm still a little confused on, on the assigned and unassigned. Like the 480 surplus we had in '21. I, I asked Mark earlier, we could take that and give it to capital improvement funds and say, yes.
Yeah.
But it's in the assigned fund now.
Yeah, so the way that-
Can you repeat what you just said now?
What's that?
Can you repeat what you just said?
So we had a 4, we had a 480,000 dollar surplus in '21, which is now in the unassigned, the assigned fund.
Yeah, I think so. I thought, I, I think you guys do it backwards from how I would do it.
That's what you told me.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Considering, which says to me, it's not available to use for putting in a capital equipment fund. But you said-
That's correct, right.
But you said in another, you know, that it was.
Yeah. Again, because the way that, the way that your fund balances have been classified, I think are not are not in line with Gatsby's definitions personally, I don't think they are.
So who put the 480 in the, in the assigned fund?
Well, I mean, technically it's to the, the town's treasurer, right? But in reality, what ends up happening, yeah, what ends up happening is because towns, small towns and schools don't have the, the technical expertise, they end up relying on their auditor to say, hey, you know, how should this be done? Now, me, it's, me personally, the way that I've seen uh, the, the classification of the fund balance, I get why it was done that way. But it's not the norm, it's not common from the clients that I've worked with as both an auditor as also as a, a business manager, it's not common on the classification. The common classification is, everything is unassigned, right? Unless you actually commit it or restrict it. And then your budgeted deficit, what, what most people call the budgeted use of fund balance, is the only thing that is assigned, it's taken out of your unassigned fund balance and set aside. And the reason for that is because you want to, it helps the users of the financial statements to understand, hey, if we come in exactly on budget, then our fund balance at the end of the year will be this. But um, let me give you an example. Again, let's say you had 300, 3.4 million dollars in total fund balance, total general fund balance at the beginning of the year.
Does that include unassigned?
Yes. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, right. Total fund balance is, you know, you total-
You say fund balance, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
You say fund balance, is it the unassigned fund or you're talking about the whole general fund?
So I'm talking about the, the general fund, fund balance, so there's a, a bit of terminology here. So fund balance in, at first, let's first understand that. Fund balance is equity, right? It's your, it's the difference between your assets and your liabilities, right? So you have, you know, a million dollars in cash and 200,000 dollars in payable, your fund balance is 800,000 dollars, right? Total fund balance, okay? Gatsby takes that total fund balance and says, well, let's classify that. Let's, let's break that out into components in terms of their relative liquidity, right? In terms of their relative ease of use. So there's non-spendable fund balance, which is in non-spendable form, that just says, look, it's already, it's not even in spendable form, so it's obviously not liquid, so we're gonna-
Can you give an example of that? It would be helpful for people to have an example of-
Can I write on that whiteboard?
Yes, I was actually gonna ask you to do that because I was about to get to it.
So let's say you have assets of, uh, let's say, you know, 10 million dollars, which includes cash, you know, receivables, you know, tax receivables, prepaid expenses, right? Whole bunch of different things, right?
This is the general fund you're talking about?
Yeah. This is all just one fund, okay?
Including committed?
Yeah, let, right, let me. So a general fund, a, in, in governmental accounting, a, a fund is a set of self-balancing accounts. And what that means is, when you think about the accounting equation, it just means assets, liabilities and equity, right? Or assets, liabilities and fund balance. So you have assets, let's say there's 10 million dollars in assets. These are your resources, these are what the town has, it's, the definition is that it, it has a potential future use, right? Right? Um, so cash has a potential future use, it can be consumed, right? You have liabilities, which are obligations on those resources. So accounts payable is, is one, accrued, accrued payroll. If you have escrow accounts that, you know, you have impact fees that, you know, you have to give back to the developer, something like that, right? Those are all claims on these resources, right? So let's say that's 2 million dollars, okay?
Bond payment?
Bond payment, right? Uh, well, in, in governmental funds, they focus on current resources and current liabilities. So long-term assets and liabilities like capital assets and long-term debts are not included in governmental funds. But yes, in general, but you're understanding what a li, the, just the basic, this is just basic accounting. I mean, not even necessarily Gatsby accounting, right? Governmental accounting. So the net between these two is, under Gatsby, governmental accounting is called fund balance. Now, the total fund balance is gonna be 8 million dollars. It's simply, what do you have for resources minus your claims, right? To those resource. And, and it's the, it's the standard accounting equation, so, I'm sorry. Assets equals liabilities plus owner's equity, or in this case, fund balance, right? It's two ways of looking at the same thing, assets minus liabilities equals fund balance, right? But those two equations are the exact same statement, right? This, what, what uh, Gatsby does is it says, well, look, it's useful to the users of the financial statements to break this up. Because users of the financial statements are focused on fund balance, because that's their resources that are available after claims are taken out. That's their resources that are available for use in the coming fiscal year, right? If I have a 10 million dollars in cash and I only focus on cash, I might overestimate how much resources I have to be able to provide goods and services in the future, right? Well, yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
So let's say, so I just wanna make sure that I understand. We, here, this isn't any of like the capital accounts.
No, that's correct.
That will come out of here and this is where we're gonna start separating.
Uh, correct, but what I, I mentioned earlier is it's actually even more useful um, under governmental accounting to separate out funds that are for specific expenditure that don't lapse. The general fund you use for, or at least I use it because it's easier um, to understand and, and convey it to taxpayers. The general fund I just use for your operating, you know, fund.
So what?
So there are no capital reserves. You actually have other self-balancing accounts. The public works capital, capital reserve, you have the fire department capital reserve, right? You have uh, the municipal buildings capital reserve. You have the, you guys raised for a, a revaluation reserve, right?
So that's separate from this?
All of that is separate from these resources. They have their own self-balancing accounts, right? They all have their own assets, liabilities and fund balance, right? So the, the public works capital reserve has its, you know, whatever, 500,000, whatever is in there. The fire department has its public, has its amounts in there. The, the revaluation reserve has its assets and liabilities and it has nothing to do with these, okay?
Got it, thank you.
So this is just your resources for providing your day-to-day goods and services, right? So getting back to the fund balance, Gatsby says, you know, it's useful, yes, 8 million dollars is, is good to tell people, right? When, when they're trying to make economic decisions with respect to the town, to say, okay, well, we have 8 million dollars in resources. But it's even more useful for them to know, okay, well, of these resources, what's their relative liquidity? And that's where you get um, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned.
Okay, now is when I think people would benefit from an example of each of one of those things.
Yeah, I will go.
Thank you.
Okay. So each of these has a definition, right? Non-spendable by Gatsby's definition said is any of your net resources, any of your portion, any portion of your fund balance that is not in spendable form. An example of this is prepaid expenses. Prepaid expenses, oh, well, I paid, you know, whatever, I paid rent on this fire department, uh, this fire building. And we paid, the money went out the door, the cash went out the door. Um, but because it's, it's for the coming month, we're not gonna recognize that expense until the coming month, right? This happens primarily with insurance. So you pay general liability insurance of, you know, 40,000 dollars a year, but usually you prepay it, even though it applies to the future, right? Pay it July 1 to apply for the next six months. That's a prepaid expense. Well, that's not in spendable form because you already sent the cash out the door. It's part of your unassigned, it's part of your fund balance, right? It's still a resource. When I send the cash out the door for 40,000 dollars, this goes down by 40,000 dollars, so this is 9,060 and this is 40,000 dollars. My resources haven't changed, my total assets haven't changed, I still have 10 million dollars in assets. Uh, but it's useful to know, oh yeah, you know what, of that, of, of this 8 million that we have in um, resources, some of it is not in spendable form. Another example would be inventory, right? If you got, uh, do you guys do um, bulk fuel gasoline? Right, so you have a tank somewhere where you bought, you know, bulk fuel and you have a huge tank of gasoline. Well, that's an asset, but it's not in spendable form, you can't really use it for, well, it's not, you, you can use it, but only for very, very specific thing, right? So that's non-spendable, that's the least liquid because it's not in spendable form. Restricted and committed, you guys are familiar with. Restricted is simply means it's, it's set aside for specific expenditure by an outside source, right? Either by a donor or by operation of law or some other reason, right? So LRAP funds, uh, local road assistance program funds. If you don't spend them for what they're supposed to be used for, you have to set them aside and they're restricted only in the future for working on the roads, right? A donor gives the, the town, you know, uh, 20,000 dollars for scholarship funds, right? Those would be restricted, right? Um, that's also useful because you go, oh yeah, in this 10 million dollars that we have, we also have 10,000 dollars that, you know, is, is for, you know, buying whatever. Committed um, is, uh, the same as restricted, it's set aside for specific expenditure, but at the highest decision-making authority of the town. And in town's case, because of the way you guys are set up, that's the townspeople, right? So the townspeople say, yeah, uh, we're setting aside a reserve for the, the revaluation reserve, right? 60,000 dollars, that's gonna be committed. If, if, if you keep accounting for it in the general-
Okay, wait, pause.
Yes.
That's gonna be a confusing example and I just wanna make sure that that's what you wanna say.
Yes, I do.
Because in our minds, that is gold, is capital reserve.
That's right, that's right.
But now it's over here, but you-
No, 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 I'm only writing, I'm only writing it here so I can do the next demonstration. It's much clearer.
Do you wanna use a different example since we're doing that as a revale in the capital improvement account?
I can.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've committed money, we've committed money.
This is what we're doing now?
Yes, I, I know and, and what I wanna, what I wanna show you, this is what you're doing, this is what you will see in your FY22, uh, your 2022 um, financial statements. What you will see, uh, as I've changed the uh, accounting, is I've moved all this, anything that's restricted and committed, I've moved them to their own funds. I've taken them out of the general fund and moved them, so now you have the 60,000 dollars sitting here. You had a public, I think you had the, an emergency reserve, you had, uh, you know, the, the, the River Park reserve. I mean, you had a bunch of different reserves. Well, yes, under Gatsby's rules, you can keep them in the general fund if you want to. In, under, or if, if you want, you can set them up in their own funds, right? Uh, which is what I prefer to do because it makes it easier to then just talk about the fund balance for operations and delivering services from one year to the next. So what you had in here, I think was like 900 and some odd thousand dollars of committed and restricted fund balance at the end of this year. Well, I've moved all of those out to their own funds and so, yes.
When you say, when you say move to their own funds, I mean, is it like, put it in a layman's term, I, I might have three different savings accounts.
Yeah.
And each savings account is, is the, the savings account is designated for-
Correct.
So I don't necessarily get a state, well, I don't get a statement for the totals, I get individual statements.
Correct.
And so you're saying that rather, so you're saying that right now, all of our money is sitting in one account, which is that general account.
One fund, one fund.
One fund, and we should, we should have separate funds to, so that those bodies aren't under the general fund, but are under their own designated fund.
Correct. And the reason why, and you don't have to actually open up a physical checking account for those reserves, I mean, right? So I don't, you don't have to have a, a checking account specifically for every single fund. But the reason why my preference is to do it this way is because then each fund has its own purpose. They, all of these reserve funds, everybody knows what their purposes are now. And everybody knows that the general fund's purpose is to provide for general goods and services for town services throughout the year, yes?
We used to do this, right? We just changed this format, like not that many years ago, we went to the townspeople and we voted, right? And when I first started, we did this, this way.
What, what's the difference between having a line account? That says, that says, the line account is for evaluation, whatever.
Right, that's why you would have-
Versus um, doing a separate account.
Because then, then you get confused where you're, where you're getting confused when I say, well, you have a total fund balance of 8 million dollars. Well, yeah, I know, but you also have to account for the fact that you have, really of that fund balance, you have a, a restricted fund balance, a subset of that 8 million dollars is restricted for X amount of dollars. A subset is restricted for committed fund balances, right? These are all called non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, assigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance. And when people start using that terminology without really fully understanding what they're talking about, they say, oh, well, isn't that our fund ba, you know, you're saying fund balance, but is that our, is that's, that's different from our unassigned fund balance? No, no, no. When I say you have 8 million dollars in total fund balance, I'm talking about the total of all of these sub-accounts, if you will, or subcategories of your fund balance. It's just to break it up. Now, you can, like I said, Gatsby allows for both, you could do it either way. You can account for everything in your general fund or you can account for it in a separate fund. My preference, because I think it makes it clearer to people when you're talking about this fund is for this purpose, right? The only time I don't do that is when it's such a miniscule amount comparatively to your total assets, right? If it's a thousand dollar grant, do I really wanna take the administrative hassle of having to record it in a separate fund and present, and you know, present, uh, and prepare financial statements for that one little fund? Probably not. But if it's something that's an ongoing thing, like, you know, your fire department capital reserves or your public works capital reserves, or something that you're saving for, like your revaluation, revaluation reserve, I think it's much clearer to townspeople to be able to say, hey, because in your financial statements, you can see these as separate and go, oh yeah, okay, we see what the activity is in, for each of those. When you, when you put them all in the general fund, then their use, right? The buildup of those reserves and the use of the reserves starts to get lost in the general fund activity. Because the use of these, these reserves has to be presented in the financial statements and they get categorized in those normal expenditures. Your general government expenditures, your public work expenditures. So even though it might have been coming from the public works capital reserve that you set aside, in the financial statements, it's not clear to see it because it's all part of the general fund, so it's just part of one of your public works expenditure accounts, right? So the way I have now set up the funds in the town is you're only left with the signed and unassigned, okay? And so the question is, well, what that, what are these two? So your assigned fund balance is any fund balance by Gatsby's definition, any portion of your fund balance that is um, set aside for specific expenditure or use or consumption by anything, uh, any level below the um, you know, highest decision-making authority. So in the town council formats, the town council is the highest decision-making level authority. If they, for whatever reason, gave the authority to their public works director to say, well, you can assign, you know, monies in your department for things, that's where it would be, right? By convention, um, what has happened uh, in um, in Maine and New England mostly because we have that, townspeople are the highest decision-making authority in town, town uh, government formats, right? In the town meeting government formats. By convention, uh, we have used assigned fund balance to tell us what the budgeted deficit is for the coming fiscal year, okay? So let's say, let's say we, we took out everything like we did this year or like we will do for twenty twenty-three. And we say, okay, well, we have eight million dollars fund balance. The question then is, well, how is this broken up? How is this eight million dollars, you know, categorized here? The default is that it's all unassigned because if it, if it doesn't fall into any of the other categories, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, then it's by default, that's unassigned, right? By convention, we say, well, what's the budgeted deficit for this year? Now, the budget deficit for this fiscal year for the town is like a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand or something like that. So instead of showing eight million, you'll show seven million, eight hundred and fifty thousand. And one hundred and fifty thousand of assigned. And again, when it comes to external financial reporting, the entire point is to provide decision-useful information to the people who are reading it. The reason why this is decision-useful to people is because then they can see at the end of FY twenty-two, if you had presented it this way, they can see at the end of FY twenty-two, hey, yeah, we have a total of eight million dollars in resources available to provide goods and services for the coming fiscal year of twenty twenty-three. Um, and we're actually budgeting to consume one, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The planned appropriations, uh, compared to the planned revenue sources, the planned outflows versus the planned inflows is a deficit of a hundred and fifty thousand. And so if we come in exactly on budget in, in twenty twenty-three, then we should end the year, and this is what I was talking about, Neil, by the way, when I said, yeah, it goes to zero and then you build it back up. At the end of the year, we will end with a total fund balance of seven million, eight hundred and fifty. Let me explain that again, right? So. We started the year with, this is now December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and this is our financial statement, right? Ten million in assets, two million in liabilities, total fund balance of eight million, we haven't done anything with this yet. And let's assume we have, we have nothing else, right? Great, this is useful for us to know because it helps us plan for the future. So now in our budget for twenty twenty-three's budget, we say, uh, well, how much do we need in appropriations? Well, we need ten million dollars in appropriations for all of the things that we provide to the taxpayers. Okay, great, that's number one, that's appropriations. Minus, what do we think, what, what do we estimate that we're going to get in revenues? What we estimate? Uh, we're going to get two million dollars in non-tax revenues, right? Um, through excise taxes, state revenue sharing, whatever, right? Okay, well, that's great. That means we need to come up with eight million dollars, uh, in other resource inflows in order to at least satisfy this appropriations of ten million dollars. And you say, well, where can we get that? Well, the primary source is raising in taxes. You go, yeah, but we don't want to raise eight million dollars in taxes. We have eight million available in resources already, do we really want to raise eight million dollars in taxes? No, we don't need to. Instead of raising eight million dollars in taxes, why don't we just raise seven million, three hundred thousand, uh, yeah, let's say that, seven million, three hundred thousand in tax? And you go, okay, that's great, well, what does that mean? Well, that means that, that seven hundred thousand of this, uh, ten million dollars appropriations is going to be funded by the existing resources that we started the year with.
So that's now called assigned?
That's called assigned. So now what happens is this is now reclassified as seven hundred thousand and seven million, three hundred, okay? And you say, great, that's very useful to know too, because now just by looking at the balance sheet of the general fund, I can, I can say, and knowing the convention, by the way, knowing the, the local convention, I can say, oh, I know what we're budgeting for a deficit for FY twenty-four. And if we come in exactly on, on budget, if we actually spend ten million dollars and we actually achieve two million dollars in revenue and we only raise seven point three in taxes, well then, we'll end the year with seven point three million in fund balance. And that's how, if you do it consistently from one year to the next, you can actually start to control the level that you have for a fund balance from one year to the next, right? You can say, yeah, well, we really need to. Now, the, the sticking point is the actual, right? Because you may budget this, right? This is what your budget, this is your budget. Then at the end of the year, you, you have to know, okay, well, how did we actually come in? Well, we actually spent nine million, five hundred thousand in, um, appropriations. And we actually got two million dollars, two million, one hundred in revenue, right? And we actually, because this was our budget, or this is what we committed, we actually got seven point three million in taxes, right? So nine point five million minus nine point four million, right? Means instead of having a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit, right? This would result in a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. Which is why I call it a budgeted deficit as opposed to a budgeted use of fund balance, right? But they're the same thing, budgeted use, consumption of fund balance, right? Instead of actually having a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit, the actual result was that we had, what, a hundred thousand dollar deficit?
Surplus.
Was it a surplus? No, we had nine point five in outflows, nine point five outflows as nine point four influx, right? So, so we only had a hundred thousand dollar deficit. So at the end of the year, what does our financial statement look like? Well, our financial statement looks like this, assuming that we had the same liabilities at the end of the year. Looks like this. Nine hundred nine, nine point nine million, seven point nine million. And that's all going to be considered unassigned at first, because we haven't gone to town meeting yet to figure out what our budgeted deficit is. So in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, we went from eight million to, uh, seven point nine million. And that's what I was talking about when I said, well, you step forward from one year to the next. And this is useful to know when you're going into budget season or a town meeting to go, oh yeah, you know what, especially when you, you've done it year over year. You say, yeah, last year we had eight million dollars and we budgeted to hit a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. Well, what did we have this year? Well, we only have seven, we still have seven point nine million, we obviously didn't do this well, right? We could shore, shore this up a bit. We've got budgeted ten million in appropriations, we, maybe we should adjust our estimates because, well, we think we have too much of a fund balance and we really want to drive this down, right? So that's why the way that you have been doing it in the past, that the town has been doing it where you are taking what you actually had for revenues and using that figure to arrive at how much you want to raise in taxes, you, because it's, it's historical actual revenue that you raised, you end up committing in taxes usually more than you need. And that necessarily starts to pump your fund balance up, yes?
So making, say that we're going to change this philosophy of estimating.
Yep.
And this is the first year that we're going to do that. So we basically have our actuels from twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
And you're saying, okay, let's make the es, let's bring in the estimates for twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Aren't we doubling our revenues?
No. What do you mean doubling your revenues?
Because you're using the actual revenues of twenty twenty-three and now you want me to estimate what.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, no. The actual revenues that you have, they're not revenues for twenty twenty-four. The revenues that I had for, even if I had, you know, two million dollars or whatever, however many, million dollars, those, those don't, aren't revenues for twenty twenty-four, they're already earned, they're already sitting in your fund balance. They're part of this deficit that gets closed to this fund balance at the end of the year.
But that, that's what we've always done, we've always used.
No, I know.
Actual revenues for forecasting the next year.
No, I know, and what I'm saying is, you're essentially saying, hey, how much did we make in, in revenue last year? Well, we made two million dollars. Okay, well, let's use that nu- number as opposed to a, an estimate for what we will get to drive what we're going to raise in taxes. And in reality, what happens is if you use twenty twenty-two's numbers for twenty, twenty twenty-two's actuels to arrive at twenty twenty-three's, um, estimate, you're normally going to be underestimating your revenues because in normal, in normal economies, your revenues are just going to slowly increase. So if you actually adjusted what you took for an estimate last year, right? Last year's revenues and just simply adjusted them, you would have raised less in taxes, right? Created, um, more of a budgeted deficit and likely, all else being equal, you would have had more of an actual deficit this year.
I think everybody's hesitant to, when you look at the actuels from a previous year, you're hesitant to say, well, my actuels are going to increase this year.
No, I get that, right.
But, and right, therefore, by estimating this next year that it might increase, we haven't been doing that, therefore, we've been raising too many taxes.
Correct. You're being, you basically have been ultra-conservative in your estimates.
Well, that's not bad.
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is, it, well, it depends on what your, it depends on what your objectives are, right? It depends on, if your objective is to actually bump up your fund balance, then yeah, you want to be conservative in your estimates. And using last year's actuels is just as good as, you know, coming up with some random number.
But wouldn't you, we had talked about, then mentioned about transitioning to our calendar year, fiscal year.
Yeah.
Changing that. So wouldn't that, to do that, wouldn't this be the appropriate time to do it? Because you've got, your, your revenue's going to be higher, therefore, less impact on that tax.
It really just comes down to when the town feels comfortable in doing it. It does, I don't, I don't see it as a, as a significant hurdle to go from June, I mean, from a December year-end to a June year-end, right? All it means is you're just going to budget appropriately. It just means that instead of ten million in appropriations, you're going to have a year and a half worth of appropriations. So you're going to have fifteen million dollars in appropriations. Instead of two million dollars in estimated revenue, you're going to have three million dollars in estimated revenue, right? I mean, it, it just means that you just multiply by one and a half. It does mean that your tax levy then should generally be one and a half times. Then it's, that's really just a question of either you fund that half from an existing fund balance, which is what, uh, she was suggesting, or you simply, uh, adjust when you collect those taxes, which you can do at the tax committee. You can say, well, instead of one, one, you know, collection point, we collect it two times over the year or three times during the year. We take up, take your total tax levy and you just, you, you, you have to pay it in November and May and then again, whenever, right?
So Mark, in your world, does a sign go to zero at the end of the year?
A sign goes to zero at the end of the year and then at, at, at annual town meeting, you guys approve an appropriation along with estimated revenues. And then that drives, okay, well, we're, we're going to budget to use X amount of dollars. And usually there's a warrant article in the town meeting that says, shall the, shall the, uh, town authorize the select board to, um, you know, use up to X amount of dollars of unassigned fund balance to lower the tax levy? Once that's approved, then that's what becomes unassigned. So it basically, let's say it's four hundred thousand this year, so this drops down to seven, seven point five and this goes up to four hundred. Your to, notice your total fund balance doesn't change, right? Your total fund balance at the end, uh, during the year doesn't change. It only changes once you've closed out the year and you've closed all of your activity to fund balance at the end of the year.
And then what becomes the recommended use of the unassigned funds?
Well, I'm sorry, what becomes the recommended, uh, budget deficit or budgeted use of fund balance? It depends on how large it is really and also what else, what other, what other, um, activities that the town wants to engage in. So like I said, you had three point four million going into this year, you're likely, based off of what I was looking at today, you're likely to maybe have a hundred thousand dollar deficit at, at best, right? So you're only going to, you're still going to end up with at, at the end of FY twenty-three, at least from my unadjusted amounts, uh, three point three million. The question then is, okay, well, how do we use that? We don't need three point three million, right? We probably need at most two million in the fund balance just to have a really healthy fund balance, because we already have all of these reserves set aside. The more reserves that you have, the, the, the smaller the fund balance that you really need. So three point three million, well, that's where you guys come in together and you say, okay, well, what do we want to do with that? Do we want to set aside more money to capital reserves because we want to buy something or, you know, pave some roads or whatever? Or, uh, do we want to set it aside for transitioning to, uh, you know, a June fiscal year end? Or what do we want to do with that? That's where, that's really just a conversation.
Where do the payments to the IRSU fit in?
They're part of your expenditures, they're part of your, um, appropriations. So there are certain things that you don't, uh, normally have approval authority at town meeting anyway, right? So you don't have approval authority over county assessments, RSU assessments, uh, or any general obligation bond, uh, payments, debt service.
But those would be accounted for.
They would be accounted for in year, yes, that's correct, yeah.
At estimates.
And you'll see that, you'll see that in the budget workbook this year, which I don't know if that's how you guys have done it in the prior year, but we've accounted for all of the actual out, resource outflows for the year, primarily because you'll see on the, on the, uh, the summary sheet, the first page, primarily because I'm trying to show, uh, this targeted, how much you're going to raise in taxes, because that's really the most important question. How much are we going to be raising in tax compared to last year? And so you, you know, you first, you do your first swat, you know, you first go through and you say, okay, well, we want this for a budget and this is what we have for estimated revenues. And then as your budget committee meets over and over again, you're starting to adjust this either upwards or downwards and you're starting to adjust this upwards and downwards and all of that's doing is, is it's just modifying how much you're going to raise in taxes, yeah?
So the estimated revenue, is there a formula for that or is there a clamborian wizard we ask?
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's not really a formula, it's, it's normally just, well, this is what we've, like I said, this is what we received, what we got last year in actual revenues. The state, for example, comes out with its, uh, initial estimates in March for state revenue sharing. Most towns take that and they go, all right, well, we don't want to budget, we don't want to estimate that we'll get all of that, so let's kind of do ninety-five percent of that. I mean, there's, there's a bunch of different techniques, but like I said, most of your, most of your revenues, your non-tax revenues comes from state revenue sharing and excise taxes, so those are the two big ones. Everything else usually doesn't account for more than, uh, well, it depends on the town, I guess, but usually it's not more than ten or fifteen percent of the rest of your non-tax revenues, uh, that those take up the lion's share, yeah?
Doesn't every single thing that comes in has to go into a line item or into a chart of accounts? So you see where every single penny goes, like, that's a balance sheet.
Yeah.
But.
That's correct, but so.
We have the chart, we have the chart of accounts and, you know.
So there's, so yeah, right, I mean, obviously I'm aggregating them here, right? So there is a chart of accounts that has all, all.
Income and expenses.
It has all accounts, right, it has, so your chart of accounts includes all of your accounts within, uh, your town. So we have all of the accounts for the assets, we have all the accounts for the liabilities. The revenues, you have individual line items for revenues, but normally you, you, you categorize them. So you'll have taxes, excise taxes, intergovernmental, charges for services, um, other revenues.
Grants.
Grant, uh, yeah, right, I mean, so there's, so there's, you know, just a few categories. Likewise, there's categories for your expenses, right? So you'll have a whole bunch of expend, like, I don't know, the town has maybe what, two hundred different expense accounts, right? Or expenditure accounts. But then those are categorized, well, this is general government or general administration, this is municipal buildings, all of these accounts are municipal buildings, all of these accounts are fire department, all of these accounts. And so you categorize them because, uh, the, it's really not useful to external financial statement users to see every single account. It's fine to just say, well, what are we budgeting for public works this year? What are we budgeting for fire department? What are we budgeting for, uh, admin? What are we budgeting for, you know, debt service, just large categories. But yes, there are accounts for every single one, yeah?
So are you recommending that we do an overhaul budget this year versus warrant articles on each department?
Yeah, well, the way the, the way that I do it is, or that I advise clients to do it is, um, the way that your budget is set up, the budget workbook is going to be translated directly to warrant articles so that, uh, people can see, but, you know, the select board, the budget committee can see, but also normally, uh, the, the budget is printed out as a booklet so that at town meeting, individual taxpayers can see, okay, well, what did they budget for, you know? Yeah, they're asking for at a warrant article, you know, for, uh, general administration, right? They're asking for, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. Well, that's made up of a whole bunch of things, right? Salaries, you know, retirement, supplies, whatever, right? Usually the budget workbook that, uh, taxpayers can see at town meeting that they can flip through will break this out to, into those individual accounts. will break this out to those individual accounts. Now, when they vote on a warrant article, that's the budget authority, right? So the $200,000 is just for general admin. So even though they may have said, "Oh, well, we budgeted $80,000 for payroll and $60,000 for supplies." Well, if you end up with, you know, $85,000 for payroll and $40,000 for supplies, that's fine, so long as your total departmental expenses comes in under that warrant article authority, yes.
So we used to do that.
Right.
And that turns into seven, eight-hour-long town meetings.
You mean having the booklet?
Yes, because people will get up and make motions on the floor to adjust those numbers, and so...
It depends.
Is it a situation where, because I mean, I do think it's important for voters to be able to see that level of detail.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I also recognize why we want to vote on a budget as a whole and not nitpick every single line at town meeting, right? And so with open versus closed wording for articles, is that a way to be able to control that the warrant article would be specific to that number and not to broken out into the level of detail where it could be changed? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I see what you're saying. So for, to get to your first point, some towns, despite what I, what my advice is, and because, my advice is that just because I prefer the transparency, the very open, "Hey, look, this is what we're budgeting, right? And if you don't agree with it, then make a motion to change it." But I can see, particularly, and it varies from town to town, I can see how that can, you know, cause a town meeting to go from, you know, an hour to 18 hours, right? So some may opt to simply just put that available on the website. The town's website is publicly available, but it's not really at town meeting. You should have looked at it yourself ahead of time, done your homework, right? And yes, the wording of the warrant article is important, right? If you word it so that it's, so that it's, I think it's, maybe it's called closed, right? But there's one way to word it where you can make a motion to reduce it, but you can't make a motion to increase it. And then there's another wording where it says, "To see what amount, if any." And then there's a recommendation. And then that recommendation is simply that. And then any towns person can go, "Well, I make a motion to..." Even though the budget committee and the select board, you know, budgeted 200,000, I make a motion to budget 250,000 for no reason whatsoever. Normally, that's why the select boards and the budget committees do want to have conversations and be as open as possible in their meetings, their public meetings, so that the townspeople feel confident that when they give them recommendations, I'm not just coming in willy-nilly going, "Hey, we think it should be, you know, something else." I have experienced town where there was no trust, even among the select board members, right? There were factions. And so you ended up at town meeting, two different budgets. One that was the official budget that the select board had voted on, but a minority had not approved, right, had voted no, but they were overridden. And then they came to town meeting with a whole bunch of different amounts. And it, there's no information that goes into that, and there's no trust in any of those numbers. And so what happens, well, most people would just, will all just vote for whatever's less, even though that may not necessarily be the most prudent thing to do, given the town's planned activities for the year, right? Well, we need more to give raises, we need to pave, you know, that road and that road, we wanted to do this and that, right? So it's much better if the select board and the committee can always agree. I understand that that's not the case. But it's much better if you guys are acting as boards and saying, you know, "We agree on all this," because then that just gives more confidence to your townspeople when they go, "Yeah, okay, we elected these people, we pointed these people to really look out for our best interests. And if they're all in agreement, then, okay, maybe I'll go along with it," right?
One question that I had about the thing that you pulled out and earmarked, is that a good way to say that? Is that actually an account? Or is that just represented on spreadsheet data, that type of thing? Or is that money actually not in that account and in a separate account?
You mean a bank account?
Yeah.
I think the town has, what, six or seven different bank accounts where there are some, like the cemetery trust has its own bank account. There's one for the park fund that has its own bank account. There are some, it's not required, there are some towns where it is required based off of, like, the grantor says that it has to be, like, you know, whatever. But it's not required, it can be just what you say, which is, it's just an accounting for it. And that's where governmental inter-fund accounting comes in, where it, well, due to and due from. This fund owes that fund. It's just basically saying, "Well, we have all of our cash represented here in the assets of the general fund, but part of these claims to those are due to other funds. So even though we legitimately in the general fund have $9.9 million, well, the claims to that are other funds, so $1 million is here. Well, what's the net effect of that? The net effect of that is to reduce your fund balance." To reduce your fund balance so that, so that when you're actually looking at fund downs, which is why most people just focus on the fund downs, or primarily focus on the fund downs. Because that tells you, okay, well, what are my net resources that are available for use in the future?
So are our capital funds accounts, are they part of the general fund?
Like I said, not all of them, yeah, most of them are in here with a representation of two other funds in the general fund. And then on the, in the other funds, you have due from, basically, due from the general fund.
Any other questions, Jane?
No.
Can I ask a question to address Chair? You've seen the audit. I saw, I just looked at the financial statements. I assume you're looking at, you're talking about the internal control documents?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, what's your role?
I'm sorry.
This is my first time.
Yeah, no, so my name is Mark Roy. I'm a CPA with a firm, and one of our jobs, one of our lines of business is to do municipal business management. So we act as the business managers on an outsourced basis for towns and schools around the state. Meaning, we manage not just the day-to-day stuff, like accounts payable, payroll, but then we also provide advice, interim financial statements, prepared year-end financial statements. And then we take, we send those off to an auditor to be audited.
So you didn't actually do the audit?
No, we're not the auditors, right?
The auditor spoke with us, a lot of what her concerns were that were in the audit were being addressed by the work that Mark and his firm were doing.
To clean up some of the accounts?
Yes.
Right, so a lot of the, any internal control issues you have, I mean, obviously, there's always going to be room for improvement for anything, right? So it's always a kind of a risk versus the amount of resources that go towards it.
This seems pretty significant, though.
A lot of that has been addressed, or I would imagine that at least the most significant ones. I don't, I don't know, I didn't read it, what was the...
Because what they've highlighted is material weaknesses related to cash account reconciliations. And I've heard rumors that there's missing cash. I don't know if those are true or not.
Those are not true. But the cash reconciliation is, obviously, as you know, is a critical control to make sure that you're accounting for the cash from one month to the next.
Pretty basic.
Right, it's a very basic control. Apparently, it hadn't been done for months and months and months, so...
Then the second one is significant deficiency related to segregation of duties. And the third one is...
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to go into the audit right now directly. I mean, this, the goal of what Mark and his company has been hired to do is to get us to a point that all of the, all the cash, all the accounts are accounted for. So there is no money missing. The idea is to get these all bucketized in the right category so that moving forward, the accounting system is in a state that we're already able to easily read as a town, as a board, as the boards.
I think that makes sense. I guess the feedback that I had is, I did look on the agenda and it just said Mark Roy. I didn't know who that was. So I had been under the impression that he had prepared the audit. So I think it would be good if the agendas included a little bit more detail so that people understood who was speaking. But what would be the appropriate time to get some questions answered about kind of what the town has done to address these things? And first of all, I'd like to understand what the problems were. And then I'd like to know what the town has done to address, other than hiring, an external consultant.
Are you able to feed that into our town manager?
Okay, so I should come down to the town hall?
It was all addressed at the meeting with the auditor. Because that was, your question is a question I asked of her.
Yeah.
So if you go back and find that meeting, she'll address it.
So it's on the website?
It is.
Okay, so I can watch that and then I can come down and, is it Jerry? Come down and talk to Jerry?
Hey, Jerry?
Okay.
I just want to follow up with that also. And I think that a large part of what Jerry identified as reasons he got here is that this was a significant issue and advocated strongly to hire Mark in his firm to be able to address the issues that were identified in the audit. And so I, I'm just so happy that you're here. Jerry, well done. And Jane, please follow up.
I will, yeah.
Because I know you will, and I'm live, and I'm, yeah, this is good.
Any other questions, Mark?
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much. Thank you, super helpful.
Jerry, you have a question?
Yes. I have, uh...
Thank you.
Yep. Other than just working on the budget, Mark, that's what I've been...
I'm sorry, Jerry, you don't need me anymore.
No, no, you're good, thank you, thank you so much. No, I've just been working with Chief and New York Commissioner. Only it's a budget together is what we've been working on the most. We've got it pretty much wrapped up. For the most part, there's still some stuff we need to talk about. Other than that, Jessica's back to work for the most part. She's working full and all the time, but it won't be long before she's back. I think she's in a wheelchair until the first of January. She gets out of that and get in or attend the window. Other than that, I don't really have much else to report on other than... Right now, the focus is the budget. And there's a lot of changes in the budget, so we'll talk about that when we get together.
All right? Any questions here, Jerry?
Going forward, are we meeting here from now on? Or is this because you expected a lot of people to attend to you?
Yeah, I just expected...
Okay, I just wasn't sure if this was a permanent change, starting, okay.
Well, we can talk about that when we give budget talks and things like that. I thought this was going to be a fairly lengthy meeting with Mark here, so I didn't add too much of that stuff.
Thank you. All right, organized reports, anybody have anything to report or would like to, Josh?
Just to address the issue I raised last meeting about the sheriff's department, I did, I spoke with two sheriffs about what the sheriff's, the plan is. And so the money that was allocated by the county commissioners is not specific for, root for, it's just for a new deputy. So there is that, and I know there was talk before. One of them recommended, we put aside money if we wanted specific speed details and stuff in town. And I said, "Well, no, I just want to make..." I said, "My question was what the plan is," and that was an issue for the town. But they do do that, and he wanted me to pass that along. Yeah, that's, so that, that's it.
Some context, we have tried that in the past.
We have tried that.
And it, one of the quickest things I've ever seen shot down on the town floor.
Can I say something as a reminder as to why that might help you guys for the future?
Wasn't picking, can we call that right now? Thank you. Only thing I have is that we did meet with the RSU five. Last week, it was the board last week. And so we got a download of, they're mostly looking for us to give them an idea of any upcoming projects so that they don't, if they happen to have a project as well, that they don't want to conflict with maybe say a large upgrade that we might have going on. So everybody was somewhat projecting what they might, what they might need in the future for most of the capital expenditures. There was no real large item like schools that they were considering. And we had very little to add to that as to what we might be doing from an infrastructure-wise, other than, I know we had, Jerry's been looking at the upgrade in the town hall, which we've already discussed, and that needs to be a bigger picture moving forward. That was the largest capital expenditure that we thought might be coming up that would affect the RSU and maybe some of their decision processes. How they make sure they kind of keep their budget in line with not getting the town getting hit from both sides at once. Those I met last week. Anything else?
The Solid Waste Committee, I kind of expected to see them on the agenda tonight, but I understand that, I mean, it is starting to get late. Do you anticipate, when you expect the Solid Waste Committee to have a report?
I don't.
Okay, that's fine. And then, did the RFP, there was a resident who reached out asking about the RFP for the solid waste contract, has that...
Who was it, Mike?
No, it was the company that I brought up last.
So I haven't, he hasn't reached out to me.
Okay. Is it posted?
It is posted, well, the whole RFP is not posted. So if he wants the whole RFP, he'll have to reach out to get it.
Okay, I'll just make sure that he has your contact info. That's all.
Okay, all right, move on, consent agenda, motion to...
I have a thing for board member reports.
Excuse me?
I just had a question. Last meeting, we talked about our next meeting being where we submit red line comments or policy, and one of the things that had been discussed was putting that discussion off until the January meeting. Is that something we can officially...
We're going to, we'll put the discussion off, but I still want the red lines.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Send the red lights to me for the, to the...
I just wanted to confirm where we're going to have that discussion in the...
It'll be later in, into January. We're going to do it around all the budget meetings that we are coming up, so...
I just wanted to confirm.
Yep, so that, yeah, that's what we're going to do. And so, yeah, red lines, so I'll get to that in a second. Get to consent agenda. We have a motion to accept.
I'm willing to accept it, deconsent agenda.
Josh moves, do I have a second? Have a seconds, any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, motion carries by zero. Upcoming meetings, we got the select board meeting on 12/26. It'll be a relatively short meeting, although we will add to the agenda a discussion, depending on the input from our attorney on the union church options there. And a little short meeting on the 26th, and then we have our next meeting on 1/9. Again, that'll be at the town office at this point. Plenty more meetings on 1/3 of 2023. 24, oh, sorry, I'm reading the script. All right, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's my...
Love to get used to that. And then the only other thing I had was, yes, on the rules and regulations that we're going to consider for the select board moving forward, that, yeah, if you guys would give me the red lines by, say, Christmas break, then I'll attempt to merge all those into one, so we can track changes on. It'll be helpful in word format. And then, and then we'll get that on the agenda for one of the meetings in January. But I want to make sure that the budget is all straightened out before we get into that heavy. We'll do a workshop on it, is what I'm expecting, go do it. Move forward with that, all right? Do we need an executive session this evening?
I'll defer to you on whether or not you think we should do that tonight.
If we could, we could do a quick wonders to have that quick discussion. Probably appropriate, I don't think it'll take that long.
I agree.
Thank you all.